Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenek. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Tomgrotty. Alderman Tedgrotty. Alderman Repella. Alderman Nichols. All are present with the absence of Alderman Schmidt.
So, the first item on the agenda this evening is a special use permit, but before we do that, Director Schrader, did we get the chamber presentation ready to go? It's ready to go? I was thinking you guys were the auditors, and all of a sudden it jumped out to me. So, I just wanted to make sure we were ready. So, Item D is a public hearing for a special use permit for 634 Airport Road. Director Schrader, did you want to fill us in on what this is all about?
Yeah, I can touch base on this. So, we have an application by Fox Cities, Aaron's &amp; Moore. This is a landscaping company that also expanded their business to also include, they do moving as well as renting of automotive vehicles. So, they do have, like I had mentioned, a landscaping company. Part of that is looking at providing the best services for their customers. So, they are looking at adding a greenhouse at this location, 634 Airport Road, in addition to allowing some outdoor storage or display of merchandise. So, that would be some mulch bins. Those do require a special use permit within our zoning code, the C1 General Commercial District. Their outdoor storage will actually be primarily screened in the backyard, as you could see from their site plan. And then, the last thing that they are also looking at doing is, with that moving type of business that they have, they found a need within the area or a hole within the area for U-Haul-type services or other rental vehicles. So, they are looking at adding that to their queue or to the property. The Plan Commission did review this use at the previous Plan Commission meeting and did recommend approval. There were several conditions that they had placed on that. One of the big ones that they did was limiting the number of U-Hauls to be stored out front. So, again, so only allowing two U-Hauls to be stored out front and then the others to be screened in the back. So, again, from what we've heard, that this business has come in, they have done a lot of cleanup on the property and continue to do so. They did come and present at the public hearing notice and continue to move forward. So, I'll leave it at that.
With that, if anyone wishes to speak regarding that, and I noticed that I stole the microphone.
Can you hear me? Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I just came to reiterate a few of the comments I made at the Plan Commission meeting regarding this. My main concern was aesthetics of the property. Granted, this property is adjacent to Fox Crossing, and there are storage buildings nearby, but there's also Clovis Grove School and a church and St. Mary Cemetery. And Airport Road, the farther east you go, the nicer the developments are. My concern is that it appears that whenever we are adjacent to or in the vicinity of Fox Crossing, our aesthetics decline. And that's visible on Valley Road, that's visible on portions of 47, and that's what I'm afraid may take place here. I'm not opposed to the business, but I do have concerns, number one, that if they're actually not trying to make this an industrial use on a commercial site, because there's actually three items that would require a special use permit. One is the greenhouse, and from the information that they provided, it's basically a do-it-yourself harbor freight aluminum frame, plastic, instead of glass. It's a plastic screen. It has no foundation, and from the reviews I read, it's not stable against wind, rain, or snow. So, it's not, I would not consider it a commercial greenhouse, and I am cautious on, it's more of like for something for someone's backyard. That was, my one concern is that they're putting that up, and it's going to be blowing over the neighborhood. The other one is the outdoor display, not just of their merchandise, but of the storage bins. Granted, it's mulch, but if it's, if they're doing landscaping, which also includes plowing, that could be salt storage, that could be brush, and then they do removal, junk removal, and it may be in the rear of the building, but it's aesthetics again. And my main concern is the one where it says for the U-Haul vehicles. Now, the conditions that were put upon by the Plan Commission was that they would limit it to two vehicles in the front. I personally have seen U-Haul's business plan is not to build buildings or hire their own labor or pay property taxes. Their business plan is to approach commercial properties and say, let us put our vehicles, our trailers, our trucks, our vans on your lot, and we will pay you a commission for every rental that you do. And it's, if anyone has gone to Theda Clark Hospital at Nina down First Street, there's a U-Haul facility that does just that. It's not pretty, and that's what I'm afraid of this might turn out to be, because while we have a stipulation in there, it's up to code enforcement and the community development to ensure that doesn't happen. Previously, the pawn shop on 47 requested an outdoor storage, and they were denied, yet they have outdoor storage because it's not enforced. That's the concern I have. Also, a signage, there is currently a rusted pole sign with, it's hollow, and that I would think would have to be removed, but it doesn't say here. My, another concern that I'm hoping the attorney can address, this is a duplex building on one lot. So, if we're giving a special use permit, that typically lays with the land, not the occupant. Yet, this is trying to say it's only good for this business. Yet, what about the other half of the tenant, the other tenant? I think it's vacant now, but whoever goes in there, if it's a construction company, are they going to be allowed to put their dump trucks or whatever there? I think that a special use permit would lay with the land, not the tenant, and because this is a duplex, depending on what other business goes there, and I think that should be addressed by the attorney, what kind of control we would have. So, that was the big thing. It was just, it's aesthetics. We are trying to attract people into Manassas, and I'm just afraid that we keep going to a lower denominator. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the special use permit this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. And we do have the Fox Cities Regional Partnership here this evening, and they do have a PowerPoint, too. So, Becky and, oh, wrong one. Sure. If anyone wants those instead. If you just want to give them to Randy, and we can just pass them around.
Yeah.
Is that of the report that was in here or just the PowerPoint?
It should be the same. It's a copy of the PowerPoint in case we want to follow there instead.
They can hand out some.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll make it.
Oh, okay.
We can print those if you want.
All right, I can start us off, and then you can take over.
Okay.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Becky Bartosik. I'm the president and CEO of the Fox Cities Chamber of Commerce. I'm just joining Eric tonight. He's newer to our team, so I'm basically just here to provide some support for him. So, I'll let Eric introduce himself.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for having us. I'm Eric Broton. I'm the Director of Business Retention and Expansion, working with Becky here. And yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to come out and kind of give you an update on what we've been doing at the Regional Partnership. All right. You said I can click here. All right. For those of you who don't know, the Regional Partnership is a division of the Fox Cities Chamber. We are a public and private partnership, working to improve the quality of life by helping to support the expansion of local businesses. Thought we moved the slide. We do have two dedicated staff, myself and Sarah, but in reality, there are 16 of us that work on the Regional Partnership, including Becky and the rest of the team at the Chamber. So, a few of the projects that we've been working on over the years here have led to touching with 19 different companies and bringing in almost 2,200 jobs for an annual payroll of over $158 million. One of the things that we focus on is attraction of businesses to the area. We have several projects that are ongoing right now. The ones that are highlighted in green are ones that the Regional Partnership is actually spearheading. The big one that you guys probably saw on the news last week was the expansion at the airport, where we have a Legent Air Base going in that's going to start next spring and bring in, it's a $50 million project, going to bring in 60 to 130 new jobs to the area. So, with that, I'm going to let Becky tackle a few of these other things we've been working on.
Sure, I'll jump in here. So, for talent attraction, obviously, when we're out and we're talking to businesses, the first thing we hear all day, every day is, we just don't have enough people. We don't have enough people, and we need to attract more people to the region. So, one of the things that we've been working on is called Fox Cities Days, and that is where we actually take employers and we take them onto the campuses. So, a good example of that is Michigan Tech. Not too long ago, I believe it was right before COVID hit, we took a group of 24 employers from the Fox Cities, and we took over the heart of Michigan Tech's campus. And I don't know if any of you have ever been on Michigan Tech's campus, but the library is right next to the Student Union. So, imagine, if you're a student at Michigan Tech the day that we were there, you would walk out of the Student Union, or you would walk out of the library, and you would immediately see a Pierce fire engine next to a Humvee. And then, we had five tents that were there, and when they walked over to the Pierce fire engine or the Humvee, someone would come up and say, you know, do you want to come to the Fox Cities and engineer this with us? Then, we had a tent where we had a band playing, and we had a tent where we were cooking brats and hamburgers, and then a huge tent in the middle that was full of our employers. And our employers were told, we're not here today to talk about specific jobs. We're here today to talk about quality of life in the Fox Cities region and all the reasons why people would want to move here. So, we were told by Michigan Tech, if we had 100 students check in via social media, we could consider the day a big success. We actually had to shut it down at 600 students. So, we are expanding the program, and Fox Cities Days is currently scheduled to be in Platteville as well as Michigan Tech next month. So, our employers came away with huge stacks of resumes. I talked to a number of different employers that were there that said, we could have hired three people that day. And our employers really liked the campuses that we targeted because they called those graduates sticky. When people come from places like Michigan Tech and they come and work here for a couple of years, they lay down roots, they have a family, they're not just looking for a couple of years' experience and moving on. So, that's one of the programs we're working on. Smart Girls Rock is another program where we bring in employers that focus on STEM initiatives for high school girls. We always have about 80 girls, just because we can't fit more into the room. But basically, it's telling our high school girls about all the opportunities that exist here in the Fox Cities and the regions, the reasons to stay here. And then, once again, the final bullet point is Future Fox Cities Career Expo. So, if you can imagine, at the Career Expo, we bring in 3,000 students. The first day, it's all eighth graders. The second day, it's high schoolers. So, the first day, when the eighth graders come in, they talk to all of our employers, and the whole expo building is full of our employers, and we're talking to these eighth graders about their soft skills and all the things that they need to know when they're going out and talking to employers. But more importantly, they're learning about our businesses. They're learning about all of the opportunities that exist right here, so they don't even have to look outside of our area once they get close to graduation from high school. We also see a lot of, a lot of the parents find out about new jobs once the kids bring home that information. And the second day of the Career Expo is really when we bring in the high schoolers, and they meet with all of the businesses about all the job shadowing opportunities and all the internships and apprenticeships. So, if you can imagine, our small crew of 16 people managing 3,000 high schoolers and middle schoolers, it's quite the event, but it really does open a lot of our students' eyes to opportunities right here in the Fox Cities. The next bullet point that Eric asked me to cover is our Stronger Together Coalition. This is really something that happened during COVID. I can tell you, one of the first things that we did as the Chamber of Commerce, when we heard that we were going to be basically shutting down our community and shutting down our businesses, we sent out a survey. And 70% of the respondents came back and said, we don't have cash reserves to make it six weeks if we're shut down. So, the first thing we did is we went to the Board of Directors, and we said, all right, it's time for everybody to check their egos at the door. We need to make sure that every resource in our region is shared. So, we worked very, very closely with the Appleton Downtown Incorporated ADI, Future Nina, as well as the Tourism Convention Bureau, the Heart of the Valley Chamber, the Fox West Chamber, and we came out and met with public health officers from all of the different health departments on a regular basis, as well as we even put together videos talking about mandate or not, please wear a mask just to get our community to the other side of this initiative or of this COVID pandemic. But more than anything, we shared all of our resources so that together, we could, you know, take everything that we had, not duplicate services, as well as save every single one of those businesses, irregardless of the size, and have a healthy economy when we got through the COVID pandemic, which hopefully, knock on wood, we will be clear of at some point soon. But it was interesting listening to the first part of the conversation, because we work very closely with Appleton Downtown, Inc., and Future Nina, and if there's ever a desire for our organization to do a business walk with Sam or, you know, go in and have conversations where we can talk about the holistic needs of the business, as well as ask those questions, we certainly would be willing to provide those services for you, and hopefully, we could help connect the businesses with some additional support while we're there. So, just to put that offer out there, if that's something that would be beneficial to Manassas. Oh, I got one more, don't I? Sorry, just here for support, I promise. Junior Achievement. What we did this past year is we decided to partner with Junior Achievement to make sure that we were utilizing the existing resources in the region to work with our students. So, we actually went to Junior Achievement to partner before the Career Expo, and they actually went out to the schools and worked with the students on soft skills and how to interview and how to prepare them for the career fair that we had virtually this year. So, we continue to find new ways to partner with the existing resources here so that we can better, make better use of the resources that we have internally.
All right, thanks, Becky. One of the other collaborations that you may have also seen in the news recently is the Regional Fox River Coalition. We just were able to help get the Coconna Lock reopened, and what the Coalition is, is a collaboration of stakeholders all the way from Lake Winnebago up to Green Bay. Plan is to try to open up the river as much as possible for both recreational and commercial use. Obviously, in Manassas, the Fox River is a great asset, and, you know, we're working on what we can to try to get the locks here opened. You can see in the picture what happens when they're not open, the water's not flowing. You know, we want to make it attractive and not have those sites when we think about the Fox River. So, a couple of things that we kind of, statistics we found regarding Manassas, labor participation rate, so anyone over age 16, this includes people that are 65 and older, maybe retired, 69% of Manassas residents are working, which is above both the state and national average. And if you look below that, the prime age labor force, they're at almost 90%. What that tells you is that Manassas, the people of Manassas are hard workers, and they want to work. So, we do what we can to try to promote businesses, to give them jobs and have a place for them to go. Another interesting statistic we saw, the cost of living. City of Manassas versus the state of Wisconsin, annual salary is relatively even. However, your purchasing power in Manassas is a couple thousand dollars more. So, what that tells us is that City of Manassas is a great place, not only a great place to work, but a great place to live also. You get more for your money living in Manassas. All right. Final little Manassas snapshot I have, based on industry, you've got the major employers here being in manufacturing, healthcare, and construction. Those make up almost 45% of the jobs here in the city. The reason I tell you guys all this stuff about the city that you may already know about is that part of my job as the Director of Business Retention and Expansion is to target these major employers and go in and have visits with them. And the purpose, you know, I've done one so far with Sam. I've been here just a short time, but to go in, find out what kind of needs they have, what the future needs may be, and how can we help make that business stronger and help them with any expansion opportunities, help them keep jobs here in Manassas. So, we're going to continue to do that, and obviously, I'll continue to invite Sam along to any of those and work together as closely as we can with the city. That's really all we have right now. Do you guys have any questions at all?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation this evening. I'm on the industry snapshot page, which is, I think, the one before. There we go. And you mentioned that manufacturing, healthcare, and construction are the top three.
Yes.
Are those the top three employer categories in Manassas or the top three categories in which people who live in Manassas work?
These, yeah, these are total workers. So, this is off of the Jobs EQ website we pulled the statistics from. Trying to see if it, what it says on the bottom there. I know it's kind of small.
All of these statistics are pulled off Jobs EQ.
Right.
So, 40% of the
45%.
Working population, that age group that you identified earlier
Correct. Yeah, we're in manufacturing, healthcare.
Work in these three industries.
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, what have you done for Manassas this last year since we had a presentation last year?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to the two months I've been here, so.
Go ahead, I'll jump in.
I did do a visit, like I said, with Sam over at Lakeside Book, I believe they're called now, the former LSC Communications. So, we did have that visit. I've also reached out to Sam about doing a business walk, as Becky mentioned earlier. So, we have other plans. I do have several people I've reached out to to do more of these business visits. With COVID, it's, you know, coming back a little bit. It's been a little tough to get those visits nailed down, but it's something we're on top of, and actually, I've got another visit I just invited you to at United Way. So, we're going to keep doing these to get a better idea of what's going on out there with the employers in Manassas, and, you know, I'll let Becky speak to what happened prior to me coming on board.
Sure. So, obviously, COVID has really made us very busy for the past 12, 15 months, and truly, one of the focuses that we really had was bringing all of the resources together so that we could basically wade through all the misinformation and be really a voice of reason and a voice of where all the resources could be found in one spot. So, when everybody else was locked up at home, I can tell you, we were working around the clock to put together a website that the employers of Manassas, the people of Manassas, had all of the resources that could be trusted in one location. So, that took a tremendous amount of our time, as well as we've done surveys to all the business community and tried to find out what their needs were and tried to supply that information. You know, we've worked very, very closely with Sam, closely with the mayor. I know the mayor actually brought it to a member of our team recently, the importance of the focus on the locks. So, we've been doing advocacy behind the scenes at the state and, you know, local level, trying to move the needle forward. So, we've been looking at the big picture. We've been working behind the scenes, and quite frankly, we've been trying to save every business that we can in the region.
I heard you mention you're working with Future Nina and ADI. How do we get at that table with them and with you?
You're here.
Oh, that sounds like it. You were making some references, and when you did this, you were with Future Nina. When you did this, you were ADI.
And those are just organizations that we brought together to make sure that whenever, like a municipal announcement was brought forward, that they were educated before the announcement was made. But we actually meet monthly with all of the municipalities and invest in the Regional Partnership. So, Sam is at all of those meetings monthly with all of those people as well.
Thank you.
Sam is very bisque, I can tell you that.
Any other questions? Alderman Grotty.
I didn't really have, thank you, Mayor. I didn't really have a question, but I just wanted to comment on being an artist living here in Manassas and the arts and entertainment. There's 177 people living here in Manassas that are
That are working here in Manassas.
Right. Working here, but I thought that was pretty high. I was kind of impressed.
These are all, just so you know, based off the census from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, so. Not something we put together, we pulled it off their site.
They get competition.
I don't care about that. No, I don't, because as seen, the average income is $19,000. A starving artist.
Well, and it's good to know, too, that, you know, we do invest in these databases in case.
It's good to know that we do invest in these databases, so if you ever have any needs for any type of statistics, we can always try to pull those for you as well. In addition, we can, you know, if we don't have the resources, you know, we have contacts with people who can.
Alderman Taylor.
Are all the cities members of the Fox Cities Regional Partnership?
Not every municipality is a member, but we are working on that. The majority are.
Is Appleton back in?
Appleton is back in, and they have been for a couple of years.
Thank you.
I thought they got the airport named after them.
I can tell you, we had nothing to do with that one. If, I can tell you, I, when I
I still reference it as the Greenville Airport.
I can tell you, when I started at the Chamber, they did tell me that one day, the Fox Cities Chamber was the Appleton Chamber of Commerce for one day. Out of 138 years in the community, it just basically revoluted very quickly.
So, thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you more in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks.
I do have one more thing to say.
Well, you're supposed to wait to say it before you tell them to leave.
But I do get a magazine called Midwest Living, and I see that there's advertisements, and they're from, not directly from you guys, but through the, what's it called, the Visitors and Convention Center, whatever. But they still have, when they advertise, they advertise it as the Fox Cities Greater Appleton, and that just doesn't go well with me.
Understandably. I can tell you, you know, obviously, the Tourism Convention Bureau is a separate entity, but we do work closely with them, and they have been bringing in consultants for the past two years and invested quite a bit of money to find out the best way to promote the region. So, you may see a change in that in the next couple of years. So, thank you so much for letting us come and share all this information with you tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, the next item is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through F and Communications GH and I.
Is there a second? Is the motion a second? Is, are there any questions? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I first wanted to recognize the detailed park board minutes from the July 20th meeting and say thank you. I know and understand what's happening in the Park Department these days. And letter G, COVID-19 update. Things are changing very quickly these days. Director Hutter, I'm still getting used to that. Could you provide an update, a brief summary on where the city of Manassia is with case rates and burden at this point and what the trends are?
Yes, sure. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I did bring a PowerPoint today to go through. There's a few slides here. I'll keep it as brief as possible, but want to give the highlights for what we're seeing. So, okay, bear with me as I control two PowerPoints. Okay, this is today's, oops, sorry there, okay. This is today's snapshot, our numbers. So our total lab confirmed case count is 2,032, total probable is 288. This was updated today and it's numbers current through Sunday. It's always the day before. So that plus 11 you see is 11 new cases since Friday. And then when you see a negative under the probable, how this one is minus three, that typically means that those people were probable based on an antigen test and they have since gotten a PCR or confirmatory test and have converted to confirmed. This is the table showing our cases in the city of Manassia, broken down by age range. For a while there, we had actually taken out the right-hand side that lists our confirmed cases in the past two weeks because they were so low. We have since added it back in, starting with this last reporting period. So this shows we had 29 new lab confirmed cases in the most recent reporting period, which you can see was this at the top here, or you can't see it. It was July 28th through August 10th. That was our last reporting period. So what you can see here is that the cases are still kind of spread out over the age range. You can see zero to nine, all the way up to 50 to 59. There's kind of a, an equal distribution of the cases we were seeing. In the next, there we go. In the next slide here, this shows our case number and our case rate and then how that translates into a burden level and an activity level. So again, the most recent two-week period, July 28th to August 10th. You can see we had 34 new cases. That's a combined total, so that's probable cases and combined together. And that was increased from 22 in the previous two-week period. And then that translates to a case rate of 188.7 cases per 100,000 population, which puts us in a burden level of a high. And then an activity level, which is burden plus trajectory, so we're going up, and that's an activity level of high as well. Then graph here is the one that we have been tracking for a number of months now. And this is our lab confirmed and probable case rate trend and burden by two-week periods. So where we are is on the right-hand most, the right, right side down here. So you can see that we were enjoying a nice lull here where we were just in the moderate level and now we have spiked back up into the high level. These are some additional metrics that we track. The first one you'll see is that new CDC level of community transmission. We had not previously been tracking that and we have now put it in because that is, was prominently in the news and related to their updated masking guidance. You can see that we, based on cases, are at 98.9 in that substantial level. The next one down is the City of Manassia Boundary Confirmed Case Incidents per 100,000, and that's a seven-day rolling average. We're at 11. And then we have two testing metrics. The first is test percent positivity and we are pretty high at 19.3%. And then the number of tests per day at 12.6. You can see that we have a note there that our goal is to have greater than 28 tests coming back per day to really give us that good picture of what we're seeing in the community. So still a high percent positivity though, that we are keeping an eye on. Our disease investigators and contact tracers, they are able to keep up at this time with the cases that are coming in, although we are having to adjust some hours to make sure that that capacity stays at an adequate level. And then I just wanted to mention about the hospital capacity there. The first two are general capacity. They're not really abnormal. And then that last one, 2.9% beds occupied by patients with COVID-19. It's still low. It's in a good, in a good range right now, but it has gone up. And then I do have updated numbers for Fox Valley Regional Hospitals as of today. This is data that I pulled from the Wisconsin Hospital Association website. There's 45 COVID-19 patients currently admitted in our region, which is a seven-day increase of 20. And there are nine ICU COVID-19 patients, which is a seven-day increase of two. So then the numbers are not necessarily considered critical right now, but they are increasing. Okay, then just for awareness here, this is the city of, or, excuse me, the CDC indicators for community transmission. That new metric that I mentioned in the previous slide where we were in orange or substantial. And there are two indicators for that are the number of cases and the percent positivity.
And you said the city of Manassia is at 98 point something, correct?
Yes, 98.9. So right on the cusp of high.
Okay. And what are the CDC recommendations around masking and distancing when a community has reached the substantial level?
Yes, so this slide here addresses that masking guidance. So when they, when they updated that, the CDC came out with the recommendation that everyone, regardless of vaccination status, wear a face mask in indoor public settings where transmission is considered to be at high or substantial level. Then just the note that wearing a mask, even if you're vaccinated, continues to be especially important if you have a weakened immune system or are otherwise at increased risk for severe disease. And then along with that came a recommendation for someone who's fully vaccinated and is deemed to close contact of someone suspected or confirmed COVID-19, that they be tested three to five days after exposure and that they wear a mask in indoor public settings. So that would be regardless of community transmission level for 14 days or until they receive that negative test and at which point they could remove their mask if the community transmission level was below the substantial level.
Well, that's a mouthful.
It is a mouthful. So, you know, if it's, might be easier for some, if you go directly to the CDC website, you can pull up those guidelines and read through them for yourself, but these are the highlights from that.
So Manassia, the city of Manassia is in the substantial teetering on the high.
That's correct.
Is that the transmission rate?
Community transmission.
Community transmission rate. So in, if we were following CDC guidelines right now, we would be, we would all be masked. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. And I just want to remind my colleagues that a few, seems like months ago already, but I think it was just a few meetings ago, we agreed that we would follow the CDC recommendations in our meetings as we moved through this, anticipating that there may be some changes along the way. And so I hope over the next two weeks that we take a look at that and make sure that we continue to follow those guidelines for the sake of those of us who really still have unvaccinated members of our household, and I'm one of them. So I would appreciate us very much taking a look at our guidelines. Director Hutter, do you have information on vaccination rates?
Yes, absolutely. Let me scroll to that here. So so first here is state-level vaccine data for residents who've received at least one dose. The state's at 53.2%. And then we can move into the city of Manassia level. They recently released municipality data. So this is showing our percentage of residents who've received at least one dose and that is 51%. And then the next slide here shows the residents who have completed their series and that's 48.2%.
Is that age 12 and up or 18 and up?
No, that's actually a total residence. So it includes the people who are ineligible. They do not have that data at the city level for only eligible people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And can you reiterate one more time why we want people to get vaccinated?
Absolutely. So we consider vaccination the, like, best single tool, and actually I have a slide on this here. I'll just click. Here we go. So they're safe, number one. And very few people have had the severe side effects from getting the vaccine. And then what I was saying before is that we consider them the best single tool to protect yourself and others against COVID-19. The vaccines are effective at preventing serious illness, hospitalization and death from the virus, including its variants, including that Delta variant that is spreading widely right now. So it helps keep you healthy. And then vaccines help stop the spread of the virus and its variants. And fewer opportunities for the virus to spread means there's fewer opportunities for the virus to mutate and continue bringing up new strains of the virus. And so then I also have that bullet point there that mentions, you know, layering mitigation strategies. So that would mean wearing masks, physical distancing, good hand hygiene, staying home when you're sick, getting a test if it's indicated, and especially vaccination. So all of that together offers the best protection from COVID-19.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Alderman Taylor?
That, at the next meeting, could we get the pool number attendance for this last season?
This isn't about COVID.
Also, I want to say that the Smith, I agree with Alderman Grady, the Smith Park Floral Gardens are absolutely incredible this year and Severin, in charge of that, is doing a great job. And we have a construction update on the Racine Street Bridge and certainly I think we need to invite our state representatives to a meeting and talk about future funding. If the lock, if the lock system is open, it's going to put a regional and a, and a state burden on us by having more openings. And we all know that the state of Wisconsin is so generous, they're going to give us the Racine Street Bridge and then we have to fund the maintenance, the yearly maintenance on it for a couple hundred thousand a year and any repairs to it. So certainly when we enter in the factor of the Fox locks opening, it's going to put much more maintenance issues on the bridge and repair issues. And I think Lee Snodgrass and Roger Roth should be aware of that situation and, and come before us and talk about some funding issues. So thank you for your time.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the COVID report. Christine, thank you very much. Again, I think a lot of these numbers are kind of a little skewed because of the fact that unvaccinated people procrastinated or do whatever they had to do, but they didn't want to get the shot. And I think the people that were proactive, got the vaccine, got the shot, did what they had to do, are starting to pay a price for things that I would say is kind of not in our control. So I reiterated last time when you're going to give statistics, I don't know, of the 29 people in Manassia, of course, the four that are under 12 weren't, didn't have the vaccine anyhow. But it'd be nice to know of these 29, or how many they are, the reoccurring people that have the shot are vaccinated, but they're attracted, they're still getting the COVID. So that would maybe force more people to mask up or just put awareness out there that it's, you know, because I feel safe being vaccinated, but, I don't know, it's, this can get politic. So I'm just ganded at that, but it's just, I appreciate the point. It's good data. It's just, I like to, you know, people that are vaccinated, I'm glad you are vaccinated and they should stress more the people that are vaccinated, how many are getting sick because of it.
Sure. And I can say just to that point really quickly, we learned in a call today that the state will be releasing that data at the state level. They aren't drilling it down any further than that, but they will be releasing publicly that data at the state level, either by the end of this week or early next week. So information on people who are COVID-positive and hospitalized, whether vaccinated or unvaccinated.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Hutter, do we have any numbers as far as the number of city workers are vaccinated? Do you have those statistics?
We don't. We did not keep track. We certainly saw a lot of city employees come to our clinic. So we have, you know, kind of a, an idea because we just, we happen to be their vaccinating agency, but we did not keep a record of who did and who did not.
Because in the news, you can, you can see many of the hospitals and different, different organizations are requiring their employees to have vaccinated, be vaccinated or not come to work anymore. And I'm just curious if that is something that you recommend we do as a city because of our serving the public and things like that. We should be the trendsetters, the leaders of our community. And if the leaders of the community don't get the shot, why should the person who lives on Third Street get the shot if the city workers don't get the shot? Just, just throwing it out there for you.
And 100% of the council is vaccinated?
Yes, that should be, that's our niche. 100% of our people who move to Manassia because our council is vaccinated. Yes. See, we could probably use that as an advertisement.
Okay, seeing no further questions, all those in favor? I don't hear any opposed. The motion carries. Item F is Public Comments on Matters of Concern to the City. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Sandra DeBille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Just for the public, prior to the common council meeting, there was a workshop on potential American Rescue Plan Act funds and what the city staff and council would like to do with those funds. Unfortunately, this also happened the prior meeting, but no one knew about it because it wasn't videotaped or there was a technical difficulty. And we are not on Spectrum TV. So getting this out to the public, it's not happening. Staff has brought forward many ideas. The mayor has his ideas. And tonight, council members brought up some very good ideas. has his ideas, and tonight council members brought up some very good ideas. I still strongly believe the public should be able to weigh in on this. There may be some great ideas out in the public. There's criteria that has to be followed, but this is based on helping the public who's had to endure the crisis that surrounded everyone during COVID. And these funds have to be geared toward helping to alleviate that situation. So the public has the right to weigh in on it. I, for one, have several ideas, but I won't get into them now. Maybe I'll just email you. Secondly, prior to this section, the, I have to get the wording straight here. The Fox Cities Regional Partnership gave a presentation. The city of Manassia has been supporting that group since their inception. At that time, it was supposed to be a joint public-private sector function. I don't know how many private sectors are still involved. And it was based on, they were asking a dollar per capita, so a dollar per population. Manassia's roughly $17,000. We were asked to give $17,000, but to be on the board, we had to give 20, so the mayor could have a seat at the board. Originally, a lot of communities were on, and then they fell off, as Alderman Taylor brought forward. And they did say Appleton is back on again, but I'm curious if they're at their full pledge platform, or if they are at a fraction of that. Excuse me. I've been critical of this group because I have, I don't know if it's been five years that they've been in existence roughly. That'd be $100,000 that the city of Manassia has given this group, and I have seen no benefit from it. As far as retaining jobs, none. As far as marketing us, if a company comes to the Fox Cities to locate, the chances are they're going to go to a town that has the land to build. We're landlocked. We're always on the short end of the stick when it comes to those things. So I have, every budget, I ask that this amount be removed. Every budget it remains. So my other comment regarding that is that apparently they, through the encouragement of the mayor, formed a committee to open the locks. That's great for tourism. That's great for city of Appleton tourists and voters to come to Lake Winnebago. But for everyone that wants that lock open, there's an environmental group, or a fishing group, or someone deeply concerned about the future of Lake Winnebago system that is opposed to that lock opening. So keep that in mind. And part of the budget, I was, not budget, part of the check register, there is a check on page three issued for a member tuition 2021 to 22 leadership fee Fox Cities made out to the Fox Cities Chamber of Commerce. Is that in addition to this Fox Cities Regional Partnership, or is this something totally different? And to who did that go? And then lastly, I'm always told I don't say anything nice, so tonight I'm going to say something nice. The downtown at this time, I think, has never looked so nice. The flower beds are really pretty. I'm really impressed with what Jimmy Downs did with doing some landscaping in front of their new deck. I know the mayor and Tom Grady worked at planting tulips last winter. I know Community First was involved in Schmalz landscaping, and I know business owners put it, have flowers down there. It's colorful, and believe it or not, it looks better than downtown Nina. And you don't hear that every day, especially from me. Now, my little caveat, unfortunately, I wish the signs that are stuck in the sidewalk across the street would be removed, because that's actually code enforcement. And that brings me to my next thing really quick. Sam in a previous memo noted that we did hire a replacement for Joe Paulziner, code enforcement officer. I don't believe she or he, I don't know what it is, has been introduced. I'm all about code enforcement. I'm all about aesthetics, and especially on our main corridors. And that's why I'm kind of livid about how things look. And one of the things I, in Sunday's paper, it was a code enforcement in Nina. And their administrators, I'm reading this out of the paper, have proposed that it be removed from community development department to the police department to improve communication and coordination with officers in case an enforcement situation escalates and becomes dangerous. Originally, we were, again, one of the first in the Fox Valley, if not the first, to have code enforcement. And it was with the police department. Once we started citing commercial properties, for some reason, it kind of geared over to community development. I still think, especially with the workload that community development has, they are running really thin. This should be something that goes back into the police department. Citations need to be issued. Not a lot of lallygagging around. I mean, signage alone, I could write 10 pages on sign violations, and most of them are the ones stuck in the curb. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. We'll let you know when Tom and I are weeding next. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Yeah, I'd like to hold item four. That's the only one I got.
Okay. Any others? Go ahead.
At this time, I'll move that we approve the consent agendas, items one, three, five, and six.
I'd like to pick six off. Already made the motion.
Is there a motion and a second? Was that including item six for your seconds? Okay. So the items that are being approved are the common council, common council agenda, common council minutes, the street use application for the Fox Cities Marathon, the preliminary plat for Woodland Hills, and the special use permit for 634 Airport Road. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
We have any consent?
None on the consent agenda. Alderman Taylor, we would be looking for.
Motion carries six, one.
Do we have a motion for item two, the administration committee recommendation? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the continued membership in CivMCC and accepting their premium proposal for 2023 and 2024 at the self-insured retention of $25,000 and select dividend option number two, and instruct CivMCC staff to account for the dividend as marked, and this is as recommended by the administration committee.
Is there a second? Is a motion a second by Alderman Ted Grady? Apparently, does the mayor, I mean, the, he just got promoted, or demoted. I'm not sure which that is. Are you okay with the attorney commenting on that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
On the agenda, there is an error there. Since the dividend option, the motion that was made at administration committee was option one, not option two. So just to clarify that.
So I will change my motion to reflect option one. Is that what was, that was what was recommended by you as, correct?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Alderman Taylor, did you have comments on this? No? Okay, so the, the motion as corrected was to continue the membership in CivMCC and accepting the premium proposal for, and dividend option number one. Just so everyone's clear, as it was in the admin committee, and if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries six, one.
Director Schrader, you don't have a mic. Item number four. Or did you want the attorney to do it, or did you want to make the comment? Item number four before someone makes a motion.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll ask for your name instead. I'd like to hear from Sam giving us an update on this and have a history background too, as far as where we are with this at this point, because we never had an actual agreement with.
So we, we did get, we did get some information today, so if Director Schrader wants to share that with the council, I don't think we need to take action on this now?
Yeah, certainly. So I guess for a very quick recap, we were discussing with the city of Appleton last year about a second water line, or redundant water line, to go through the city conservancy. So that would feed from their water intake in Lake Winnebago to their water plant on Manitowoc Road. And basically, we, at that time last year, we pulled together a memorandum of understanding, basically allowing that easement to be approved, with the understanding that at the same time, they would work with us in putting a subdivision through that, their vacant land to the south of their plant. So they own about 40 acres back there that is currently unused and underutilized. We have been looking at this for a while for street connectivity as well as trail connectivity, and just in general, the economic spur of development for additional, additional homes that could be built in that area. So we were going back and forth with them. The city of Manassia, part of our issues were concerns with the wetlands issues back there, as well as the, the concept plan. So we did work with Dable Engineering to draft those, a concept plan, as well as do a wetland delineation so we could understand how to negotiate with the city of Appleton, because again, we can't, we can't just, you know, put a, a street directly through a wetland. We do have to mitigate those issues. Over the course of the summer, they actually did go out for bid. They opened up their bids on their construction project, I believe, last Monday. Those numbers did come in a little higher. In addition to that, our conceptual plan that we came up with, as well as the wetland delineation, showed there was a lot more wetlands within that area than, than originally we had discussed. So with that, we would have had to push a road farther to the north than what they would have originally wanted. So at this time, we did just get an email late this afternoon from the city of Appleton that basically said they're going to take a step back and revisit that. One, because of their construction numbers, how that came in, and then two, because of the overall increase of, of footprint of the, the needed land for that, that road, that connectivity road, and as well as the developable area. So basically, at this stage, we would look to have no action on this, and then we can move forward with that, with future conversations with the city of Appleton.
So it'd be best if we would table it, if that would be the council's desire?
We don't have to take any action.
We don't have to with this, then.
But thank God I polled it, because otherwise, we would have approved it with the consent agenda, and we should have been informed on that.
I wouldn't have let you do that.
All right, whatever. So I just say we just move forward.
Okay, that's fine. Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll for July 30th through August 12th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of July 30th through August 12th in the, 2021, in the amount of $3,642,792.18.
Is a motion a second by Alderman Ted Grady? Is there any discussion? Becky's still got her light on. Alderman Sevigny?
There was a question from the gallery earlier. Do you, Jennifer, our finance director, could you respond to that?
The payment to the Fox Cities Chamber was for Lieutenant Thorne to attend the leadership of the Fox Cities program. It's his tuition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2021 through 2023 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated August 12, 2021.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
There is also a license that's recommended for denial. I believe Mr. Gill is here this evening, if you'd like to hear from him.
Hello?
Sure. If you'd like to share with us anything about your application, we could listen now, or if there's questions from the council, we could also do that, too.
The letter that I received from the, the police department, it was saying that my application was denied because of, it was not filled out truthfully. And, but I just wanted to say that when I was filled the application, I was trying to be honest with it, but I'm not saying it's the, the police department is saying wrong, but because whatever the charges, they were saying that it was not marked on there. That was, that was true. But because I'm, I was not, when I was filling the, the application, I just got the, my ten slices of CD for Appleton, right before I filled out this application, like three weeks before that. So I was just filling this, this application the same as I did the other one. So that's how I made that mistake. So I was not trying to be like dishonest or not trying to lie to the city or anything that there was charges or anything.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is either for Chief Steica or Attorney Captain. Regardless of, well, there is still a felony noted on the applicant's record. So how does that, where does that fall within the guidelines provided to the common council for operators' license?
If someone has a felony that has not been pardoned under the Wisconsin statutes, that is reason in itself to be ineligible to receive a license. However, we also need to read other statutes in conjunction with that one. And there are other statutes that indicate that, I guess, just in a nutshell, if a conviction is substantially related to an activity for which a license is going to be authorized, that could be a reason. You also have to look at the time period, and if a sufficient time has gone past from the date of conviction to the time when someone is requesting a license. So those factors, and perhaps sometimes the circumstances, you know, may be such that it would not be a good idea to take a felony conviction into consideration. It might be some leading to discrimination or something like that. It just depends on the circumstances. So that's why you look to all of those points to determine whether or not felony conviction is. is sufficient to exclude a person from receiving a license.
You mentioned a felony being pardoned. Has this felony been pardoned?
No.
And we do not have a date on which the felony or the conviction occurred in our information, with the date that it occurred extend outside of those dates that you mentioned in reference to state law?
We can probably ask the police chief if he's aware of the date of conviction.
Date of conviction on the felonies were October of 2020 from the offense that took place on July of 2019, and then the prior misdemeanor for another OWI offense, that one took place on October of 2018, and the conviction date for that was March of 19.
Okay, and you mentioned OWI, and those offenses would be significantly related to having a bartender's license.
Yeah, the, the first was an OWI, the second was an OWI causing injury.
Thank you.
And that was the most recent one, correct?
Correct.
I will move to deny Sandeep Gill the operator's license for this licensing period.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it. Denied it. Thank you.
So is, that's a motion by Alderman Nichols and a second by Alderman Repella?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote? This is a motion to deny.
Motion carries seven, zero.
If you have questions, either the chief or the attorney could probably talk to you. No?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item three is the redistricting committee. Clark Kramer, did you want to explain your proposal?
Certainly. So what you have before you is a memo indicating who I've contacted about serving on our potential redistricting committee, and what these members would then be doing is overseeing all of our activities related to redistricting from a resident and citizen's standpoint. So we would bring forth a plan from the Community Development and Planning Department to the members of the committee to review and offer suggestions to us. The council would have the final say on our redistricting plan. We, at this time, would also accept other nominations for this committee, provided is just a list that the Clerk's office has come up with.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we go along with staff's recommended creating an ad hoc redistricting committee and, and including additional members. And I have an additional member, so I'll wait for a second.
Okay, so this motion is just to create the committee?
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor?
Any further discussion?
I'd like to amend the addition of another person, and that would be Mike Taylor. Mike Taylor was, I'll wait for a second.
I think it might be easier if we create the committee and then we'll...
We did.
But we didn't vote on it, and then we can take a...
Yeah, but if you create the committee, and that's what the name's there.
No, no, we're just creating a committee with no names, and then we'll take a vote on people.
I'm good with that.
Think it'll be easier. Becky, did you have questions on creating the committee?
Yes, one general question. The memo indicates that potential committee members could include residents, elected officials, and city staff. I did reach out to one city staff member today who I thought would be a great addition to the committee, and their question was, would they be an official member of the community or, the committee, or simply an advisor to the committee?
It could work either way.
Okay.
So if we appoint them as a member, they would be a voting member. If we just asked them to come to the meeting, which Planner Stevenson will be doing, he would come to the meeting, be part of the meetings, but not a voting member. I don't know if that's the person you spoke to or not, but...
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So right now, we're voting on creating the committee. I don't know if we need a roll, we might as well do a roll call vote since we're here.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Alderman Sevigny? Whoops.
With that, then, I would go along with the recommended individuals listed, Debbie Galiase, Tom Miller, Kay Fett, Gary Koopman, and Adam Kempz, and I'd add Michael Taylor.
So I did check with Alderman Sevigny to make sure he did speak with Mike Taylor, and Mike has agreed to be on the committee as well, so, in case anyone had that question. Any other discussion on committee members?
I want to just add why I wanted, why I wanted to add Mike. Mike was involved with the last one, and is very knowledgeable about doing this type of redistricting, and in fact, he was very, very instrumental in the last redistricting, to the point where he, I believe, brought forward, him and Steve Kruger, former Alderman Kruger, brought forward very good plans. We didn't take the recommendation from the committee, and because of that, we ended up having actually a better plan, because we followed the guidelines that the state set forward, and if you know Mike, Mike is about the rules, so that's why I'd like to see him.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I spoke with our planner, Joe Stevenson, this afternoon, because I felt that his background in city planning, along with his knowledge of population growth patterns and shifts over the last 10 years, and his background in public administration, and his knowledge of the software system that's used as well, he indicated to me that he's taken some training on that, and so his knowledge of that would be of benefit to the community, and so I'm recommending that Joe Stevenson be made a voting member of that committee.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend to include Joe Stevenson as well? Any, and a second by Alderman Sevigny? Any discussion on that? Nope, this is a whole separate... We, we voted to create the committee, and now we're voting to create, add members. So it's two separate motions.
That's how Tom wanted to do it.
That's how, yeah, that's how I wanted to do it. So now Stan Creed is approving the members, Becky's amending by adding another member. You guys added someone else? It's the five plus Mike. Yeah, that was, yep, I think we're, you're finding what we're doing, okay. But the first one was the six members, that was a motion.
Well, it was including.
Yes.
I did not hear Alderman Sevigny say Taylor.
Yep, including Mike Taylor. Okay. Did you have more to comment, Alderman Nichols?
No, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Repella?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Question for the attorney, do these members on this committee have to reside in the City of Manassia?
No.
They do not?
It's up to the Common Council to make their selection.
The, the other six do.
The other six do?
Yes.
Okay, because I know Joe lives down in...
Noshkosh, yes.
So did I.
Nope, you don't need to be, there, actually, you only need to be a resident for certain committees, set by statute. There are other committees that you do not necessarily have to be a city resident to be a member of.
Oh.
I do not make it a policy, though, to appoint people that don't live in the city, because I think it's important that you should be a resident if you're representing us.
True. Being an employee.
So any other questions about that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Taylor?
Well, I agree with what everybody said, you know, Joe's a great employee, but we know that our Community Development Department is overwhelmed and probably understaffed, and I would like to ask the Director if he feels that his department has time for the community, a planner...
So the redistricting already falls within our scope of work to work with the city clerk on that, so Joe will be heavily involved regardless if he's a voting member or not.
Okay.
Thank you.
So right now, the motion is to amend to include Joe Stevenson? All those in favor? Nope, then we're gonna approve everyone together. So this is just to amend the original six, and then we're gonna take a roll call vote on the seven members. So this is as amended. Mark?
Question first. So, Director Schrader, you mentioned that Joe is going to be heavily involved whether he's on the committee or not. So doesn't need to be on the committee, because he's, he's gonna be involved with the redistricting anyway, correct?
That's up to the council. He will be involved in the redistricting process. Again, if, if it's the direction of the council that they would like his expertise as a voting member, then that's how we would move forward.
The, the only difference is, will he vote on the plan, or will he not vote on the plan? That's basically the difference.
But, yeah, he's gonna be...
We make the final decision anyways, so let's move forward.
Involved, okay.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve seven members to the redistricting community. And if we could have a roll call vote on that.
Motion carries six, one.
Okay. So we have a committee, and ju- just for fun facts, since you probably are wondering, we did get some preliminary numbers. The population of Manassia increased from 17,353 to 18,268, but we don't have the census block numbers yet, we just have the citywide number. So we did increase about 5%. Appleton increased about 4%. Neenah increased about 7%. I don't have the numbers for the townships at this point, so... There we go, so... Moving on to the ordinances and resolutions, do we have a motion for Resolution 37? Oh, I'm sorry, Becky. I'm waiting for someone to say something, and... That's okay.
Move to approve R. 3721, a resolution approving the City of Manassia's liability insurance renewal through Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, Civnic.
Is there a second? So a motion and a second by Alderman Langdon. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item L is appointments. It's the Common Council reappointment of Gary Churchin. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we reappoint Gary Churchin to the Water and Light Commission for a term of 10, 1 of 2021, and 9, 30 of 20, 20, or 9, 30 of 2026.
Second.
So a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yep. I just want to say that if you really took a close look at his resume, he brings a lot to the community, and we should be honored to have someone like Gary, so...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N is public comment on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I will accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.